Welcome, I'm going to call the agenda for the organizational meeting for January 6th, 2016. I am Rob Felber, I'm the President Pro Tem. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Here.
And of course, our two new board members are-
About to be here. About to be here, so. And this is a special meeting because we are swearing in two new board members. Procedurally tonight, we're going to have an organizational meeting. We have a little bit of agenda to that, and then we will be taking a break probably about 7:15 or so, and then after that, we'll be returning for the regular board meeting. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce our Treasurer, Martin Aho, who is going to introduce our two new board members, the oath of office, to Mr. Matt Solora and Mr. Mark Curtis.
Thank you. It is an honor that you were elected to the Twinsburg City School District Board to guide the education of our children. As you recite the oath of office, you will assume a tremendous responsibility as a member of our school district with the duty so empowered. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being responsible for the education of every student in the Twinsburg School District. Additionally, board members must serve as education's key advocate on behalf of our students and our communities. Furthermore, the board must strive to work together and with the superintendent, treasurer, and staff to lead the school district toward excellence for every student in the areas of academics, citizenship, and personal development. So with this, we'd like to swear you in. So if you could stand and raise your right hand. Hereby affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as an elected member of the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during my continuance in said office. Answer, "I will."
I will.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations, gentlemen. It's my honor to welcome you and to give you each an Ohio School Board Association pin that you're expected to wear every day for the next four years. As I mentioned, we do have business to attend to, so we're going to continue to do that, and then we will have a reception. I don't believe we have any agenda changes for this meeting, so we'll continue on. We're at E, the organization of the board. Again, this is our organizational meeting. You'll hear a lot of information tonight that gets read just once a year, things that we have to do legally. So first order of business is nominations for the Office of President of the Twinsburg Board of Education for 2016, and to serve as President Pro Tem at the next year's organizational meeting until the 2017 President is elected. So at this time, I'll open up nominations for the Office of President.
I nominate Rob Felber.
Okay.
Second.
We're jumping ahead. And it's all right. Are there any other nominations for the Office of President? Okay, seeing none, I will accept, and then we will take a motion by Ms. Turl Waldron, and see if there's a second.
I'm second.
Okay, so we'll go with Ms. Davis for the motion, then. Ms. Turl Waldron. All right. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0, and I don't have to change seats, I guess. Now we'll move on to the nominations for the Office of Vice President for the Twinsburg Board of Education for 2016. I'll open up nominations.
I'll nominate Mark Curtis.
Okay. Nomination of Mark Curtis. Is there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Curtis, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. And so, a motion by Mr. Solora, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Mr. Aho, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Okay. Now we're going to get to the real interesting stuff. First order of business, this is, we are at E5, and this deals with Robert's Rules of Orders, the Order of Our Voting on Motions and Resolutions in 2016. Use of the Robert's Rules of Orders. The member making the motion is called first, and the member seconding the motion is called next. The Vice President called second to last, and the President is called last, in alphabetical order when possible. Robert's Rules of Order shall prevail in determining all board meeting procedural questions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis?
Second.
Second by Ms. Turl Waldron. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. Now that first roll call's a little rough, isn't it?
Yeah.
The names are out of order, there are new names up there, so. Mr. Aho can do it in his sleep, and now we've thrown him a loop.
Yeah, throw me a curveball.
Okay. We're now at Treasurers and Superintendents Business. There are 21 items, and without objections from my colleagues, I'll read all 21 together. Item F1, resolve that the Board of Education dispense with the reading of board minutes of each regular and special meeting, provided that they are delivered to the board members at least two days prior to the board meeting where approval is anticipated. F2, and further resolve that the Superintendent and Treasurer do internal appropriation modifications whenever necessary under the provisions of the purchasing and the other financial policies of the district and under Ohio law. F3, and further resolve to appropriate a $10,000 service fund account in 2016. F4, and further resolve to authorize the Treasurer to make payment of the 2016 installment for the Faithful Performance Bond covering the board members, Superintendent, Director of Business Services, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. F5, further resolve to grant the Superintendent and her designee authority to file applications for all projects considered desirable for the Twinsburg City School District. F6, and further resolve to authorize the signature of the Treasurer or the facsimile thereof to be used on all checks and warrants. F7, to resolve to designate the Superintendent and her or her designee as purchasing agent for the City of Twinsburg School District for 2016. F8, further resolve to authorize the Treasurer to invest funds whenever practical as permitted by law, either in short-term or long-term investments, and to give a report to the Board. F9, to resolve to authorize the Treasurer to provide payments to employees for salaries and expenses and to the suppliers of goods and services within the appropriations, a check register will be presented to the Board. F10, further resolve that the Treasurer name will appear on all active accounts. F11, further resolve that the budgetary level authority is at fund object level for the general fund and at the fund level for all other funds. F12, further resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education sets the payment for board members per the following schedule. Will receive $100 per meeting and for a maximum of 36 meetings for the calendar year. F13, further resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education sets the date, time, and place for the regular board meetings for the calendar year as noted in the agenda. Further resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts any and all federal state grant monies available to the district, and to authorize the participation of staff members in any grant programs available to the district during the school year 2016-2017. And further resolve to authorize the Superintendent to employ personnel and accept resignations as needed during the calendar year for 2016. Such employments and resignations will be reviewed by the Board of Education at the next regularly scheduled meeting. F16, further resolve to recommend the Twinsburg Board of Education appoint the Treasurer, Superintendent, Director of Business Services, and Alan Shore of Chrisley, Harrington, and Pierce as representatives to the Tax Incentive Review Council meetings at Summit County Department of Economic Development. Seventeen, further resolve to appoint Kathy Turl Waldron as delegate and Matt Solora as alternate delegate to the Ohio School Board Association 2016 Capitol Conference. F18, further resolve that the Akron Beacon Journal, The Plain Dealer, both daily newspapers of general circulation, and/or the Twinsburg Bulletin be designated the official publications for legal notices. F19, further resolve to appoint the Records Commission of the Twinsburg City School District for the calendar year 2016 comprised of the President of the Board of Education, Superintendent, Director of Business Services, and the Treasurer of the District. The Records Commission shall meet at least one, once in each calendar year to establish the rules for retention and disposal of records and to review the same. F20, further resolve that the Board of Education provides petty cash funds. Building principal or designee, athletic director may request up to $300. Central office budgetary officer may request up to $200. Food service director may request $200 petty cash in addition to a $360 change fund. Expenditures up to $25 may be made from petty cash. And lastly, under F, and further resolve that the Audit Committee will consist of a member of the Finance Committee in addition to the Superintendent and/or Designee and Treasurer. Is there a motion for those 21 as read?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solora. Any questions on those? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And moving on to D, this is the appointment of the Board of Education representatives on behalf of the Board of Education at various committees. For the Finance Committee, we have Matt Solora and Rob Felber. For the Building and Grounds Committee, we have Matt Solora and Kathy Turl Waldron. Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mark Curtis and Tina Davis. The Policy Committee, Tina Davis, Rob Felber. And the Athletic Committee, Mark Curtis and Kathy Turl Waldron. Six is the Legislative Liaison to the School Board Association, Rob Felber. Student Achievement Liaison to the Ohio School Board Association, Tina Davis. Is there a motion for those seven as read?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solora, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Turl Waldron, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. Moving on to items to H, this is representative, representation of legal counsel. Resolve to approve the following list of firms for our legal counsel representation during 2016. Smith, Peters, and Colalel, LPA. Squires, Patton, and Boggs Attorneys at Law. Reitz, Paul, and Shore Attorneys at Law. Additionally, the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund. Is there a motion for these as read?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Roll call?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 5-0. We're now at I, appointment of staff positions to the 2016 year. I1 is the Title. Nine, hearing officer, Director of Business Service. Two, the anti-harassment grievance officer, which is the Director of Human Resources and/or the Director of Business Services. Three, 504 ADA Compliance Officer, Director of Pupil Services and/or the Director of Human Resources. Four, Civil Rights Coordinator, Director of Pupil Services and/or the Director of Human Resources. Five, the Homeless Liaisons, Director of Pupil Services. And six, Suspensions Appeal Officer as Designee of the Board, Superintendent or her Designee. Is there a motion for those six as read?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Turl Waldron. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. J, the appointment of the District Records Officer for the 2016 year. Resolve to recognize the administrative assistant to the Superintendent as District Records Officer as established under the Twinsburg School Administrative Guideline 8310A. The individual in this position will serve as the District Designee in this regard. Is there a motion for J?
So moved.
We'll go with Mr. Curtis and Ms. Turl Waldron as the second. Roll call?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And now to K, what you were probably waiting for. I'm going to entertain, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Turl Waldron. No discussion, so we'll go right to a roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And that item passes 5-0. The board is adjourned. We are going to take a short break before our regular general meeting, and to entertain a little congratulations to our new colleagues, so. We will take a break. Today is Wednesday, January 6th, and I'm going to call the school board meeting to order. Mr. Aho, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Solora?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Pressing.
Mr. Felber?
Here. Thank you, and I've asked you to all rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance. Do the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, individual of liberty and justice overall.
All right, good evening. We do have the need to make one agenda change to Section H1, a typo correction for Kelly Robinson, it should read Step 8. And I'll make that motion, and if there's a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mrs. Turl Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
That item passes 5-0. Well, good evening and welcome to 2016. The transition from one year to the next is a natural time for reflection. While tonight we see a transition in the school board and the welcoming of Mark Curtis and Matt Solora as our new board members, we do so in the middle of a school year. Students have just returned from break and are lamenting those cold winter mornings. Many thanks to our past board members, Ron Stuber and Kate Kane Griswold, for their service and assistance in mentoring both ourselves, the existing board, and of course, our new colleagues. I also want to thank the administrators, the Superintendent Powers, for their help transitioning the board the past few months. I would be missed in not mentioning my family and my families and my colleagues. Thank you for putting up with the late nights and the early mornings. We'll have dinner together sometime. Many of us make resolutions at this time of year, and personally, I've resolved not to make any more resolutions. Seriously, though, the business of the school district does not wait for transition. We will undoubtedly have challenges ahead, especially on funding. State and federal mandates change often, and our board, administrators, students, and families are all affected. My pledge is to take these challenges head-on while keeping the focus, as always, on what is ultimately best for our students. I encourage my colleagues to stay the course and to keep our district strong financially, economically, and socially. We do not know what the future holds, but we certainly know that, know the past. We have a long history of academic excellence in Twinsburg, and we will remain Tiger Strong. At this point, you know, getting to the, why we're reminded we're here, I'm going to turn the meeting over to superintendents because we know we have some smiling faces from Samuel Bissell Elementary School in RB Chamberlain, so we welcome our students and their families here this evening. That concludes my report, Mrs. Powers.
That was great, Mr. Felber. Congratulations, you made it through report number one.
Yeah, that's it. You've got to do something about certain people down center staring at me, but might be some past board members out there.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Felber, on your election as Board President.
Thank you.
And Mr. Curtis, and Mr. Solora, welcome to the Board of Education. We're delighted to be working with all five of you this coming year. Marty and I work closely together, and we are proud of the work we do, and we are proud of supporting you in your roles as Board of Education members. This evening, for the organizational meeting, members of my administrative team are here because of the importance of tonight. We recognize that our community believes in what you stand for, they believe in your role in our school district, and so know that the administrative team, our staff, both the classified and the certificate members of the school district, as well as that administrative team, are here to support you and to make sure that we provide the best education we can for the students of our school district. So as you indicated, we have students here today from the middle school and from Bissell, but before we get to the students, I do have a couple of announcements to make. As you know, we just started the second semester of the school year, and as I tweeted out to our community yesterday morning, big year for Class of 2016. And as we begin the second semester of the school year, this is their time to shine. And I do encourage especially our Class of 2016 to make good choices and to do the very best you can, because this is the final push, and you don't get a second chance to make sure that your time to commencement is the best that it can be. So Class of 2016, a shout-out to you. We're excited that this is nearing the end, and the next step in your school career is just around the corner, so do the best that you can. Of course, everybody else, congratulations for making it through the first semester of the school year. Report cards will be distributed this coming Friday, January the 8th. So moms and dads look for those report cards to be either coming home with our elementary kids or mailed for our secondary students. Board of Education, as you know, we have a very important initiative here in our school district called Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, PBIS. And PBIS is an initiative that we have here in the school district to help support our students in making sure that our learning climate is very positive and that our kids from preschool all the way through 12th grade make good decisions. And part of that is making healthy, lifelong decisions. And I'd like to just do a little PR for Mark Bindus, he was here earlier tonight to congratulate the board, but he's our food service supervisor, and he asked me to remind everyone that the 7th Annual Tiger Wellness Workshop is Saturday, January 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon over at the high school in the Commons. There's a nice flyer that's on our website. And some of the things that'll happen that morning include fitness testing for our students, health boots, fitness demos, a free prize raffle board for students, and of course, our annual pause on child hunger fundraiser, which is a two-for-two-for-hunger free throw contest. And the big news is I understand that our new mayor in town, Mayor Yates, is going to try to beat our kids in the free throws score. So Mayor Yates, I don't know, we'll see if that's going to happen or not. And so come on out and try to beat Mayor Yates in the free throw. And really, it's a great opportunity, you know, the month of January, lots of folks are stuck in houses and not a lot of opportunity to get out if the weather is bad. This is a wonderful way, a Saturday morning from 9:00 to noon, again, the date is January 16th, to come out and just do some fun things. It's all about fitness, nutrition, and fun. So we look forward to seeing you there, and I want to thank Mr. Mark Bindus and our wellness committee here in the district that sponsors this. Again, this is the 7th Annual Tiger Wellness Workshop. Also, another initiative that we're hooking to our PBIS initiative is an important one, and yesterday afternoon, and we had the great pleasure, Chad and I and Mrs. Tringel, the high school principal, to meet with Sheriff Steve Berry from the Summit County Sheriff's Department, and with our own Chief Noga from the Twinsburg Police Department. And we're going to be presenting a special program at Twinsburg High School on February 11th for our ninth and 10th graders, and it's about making the right choices. Because sometimes our adolescents and our teenagers find themselves in situations with their peers, and because of being in the wrong place at the wrong time or making the wrong decision, something happens to them that will have the effect for a lifetime. And so Sheriff Berry and Chief Noga are going to present a very important assembly about making good choices to our freshmen and to our sophomore classes in the morning of February 11th. And then that program is going to be repeated in the evening at 7:00 for our parents, and we're also going to encourage our juniors and seniors to attend the night program with their parents, too. So please mark that date on your calendar, Thursday, February 11th, at 7:00 p.m. at Twinsburg High School in the auditorium. And although it sounds like it's a high school program, we do encourage all of our parents to come and to listen to Sheriff Berry and to Chief Noga make some very interesting presentations about what can happen when your child finds themselves in the wrong place, either in our community or elsewhere, and hooking up with the wrong kinds of peers, getting into situations that have lifelong effects. And we certainly want to make sure our kids have background information about making good choices. So we're very, very pleased. Sheriff Berry actually talked to me more than two months ago about this, and this is a program that he has had at Coventry High School and really believes in what he has to say, and so I'm happy for the partnership between ourselves, Sheriff's Department, and Twinsburg Police Department. So that's going to be an important evening. Also, a reminder to everyone that Friday, January 15th, is our next curriculum day, which means our staff will be here, but students do not have school on Friday, January 15th, nor do they have school on Martin Luther King Day, which is Monday, January 18th. So a nice, long weekend for the students, January 15th through Monday, January 18th. So that's all the information I have this evening to share. I would like to invite Mrs. Johnson forward, because we have some exciting things to share about Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Welcome, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Happy New Year, and congratulations to our new board members. We're excited about working with all of you this year and for the years to come, so thank you again for your support and congratulations. So yesterday was a joy, watching the students get off the bus and come back into Samuel Bissell, and it was a kind of walk-like, "Happy New Year, welcome back!" And they're like, "Happy New Year, welcome back." But by lunchtime, we were back to normal. And we were excited, and we're talking and chatting, and back to the normal things that happened at this. So in this morning, when they walked in, it was school as usual. So welcome back to our students, and I think they're ready to go now. And today, or tonight, I should say, I would like to bring Ms. Walensky up, she's one of our third-grade teachers, and we have some students here that are going to share some very persuasive writing with you. Let's see if you can figure out what they're talking about. I'll turn it over to Ms. Walensky.
So, good evening, everyone. At the beginning of last month, in December, I was going over my writing plans for my class and noticed that I still had to teach persuasive writing for second quarter. Now, as a third-grade teacher, we do a lot of writing, so I wanted something like fun for them. So as I was trying to solve my dilemma, I heard a familiar voice on my TV. I looked up for my plans, and there he was on my screen. Buddy the Elf. So the students, so I tried to incorporate elf for higher, and this is how it was born. First, the students had to pick their elf name. Their first name was the month that they were born in, their last name was their favorite color. Then the students had to pick which job they wanted to apply for. Was it a gift wrapper, a reindeer caretaker, a head cookie baker, a sleigh mechanic, Santa's Secret Service, naughty or nice list checker, toy maker, or holiday decorator? After that, the students had to fill out an application. They even had to get their fingerprints done, of course, in red and green ink. They also, and then they could have started their writing. They had to create a hook, which was drawing the reader, or AKA Santa, in. They had to develop an opinion of why they would be the best candidate, and also give three reasons. So I'm going to go ahead and call my elf applicants up.
This is Ms. Walensky's class, Elf Persuasive Writing. My name is Megan McQ, AKA Holly McMarried, and my elf job that I'm applying for is a reindeer caretaker. My hook is, Christmas is 35 days away. I'm your girl to get your reindeer and sheep to go all around the world. So hire me to feed, massage, and pamper your reindeer for the ride ahead. My opinion on my first Santa to read to get my job is, I love animals, especially reindeer, so I think I would be an awesome reindeer caretaker. My three reasons are, when I was a young elf, I had five pets. I'm good at shoveling hay into crates. I'm the McMarriest girl you have ever seen.
My name is Bryce Fielding, AKA Chinsel McJingley, and I am applying for Santa's Secret Service. My hook is, are you looking for a new Secret Service member? Well, now you got one. My name is Chinsel McJingley, and hire me for Santa's Secret Service." My opinion is, "I would be a good Secret Service member because I can protect Santa." Reason one, as a La-Z-Teck champion, I know how to protect the team and get the job done. Reason two, I would get along with my crewmates. And reason three, I have lots of brains, good grades, and I am someone you can count, you can trust.
My name is Lily Seepus, and my elf name is Glitter McJingley, and I'm trying out for the Santa's Secret Service. My hook is, "I think myself, Glitter McJingley, should be on this job because I am elftastic." My opinion is, if I, Glitter McJingley, get the job of Santa's Secret Service, AKA Santa's SSS, I would be great for this job because if Santa needs me, I could be sneaky. Reason one, I would be able to get there on time. Reason two, I am elf serious, not a goofy elf. Reason three, I'm a good ruler and tumbler. These moves, I'm not afraid to use on crimes or on bad kids.
My name is Jack Durkin, AKA Kringle Sparkletoes. My elf job is Santa's Secret Service. My hook is, "If you're looking for someone to help Santa, the wait is over. Hire Kringle Sparkletoes." My opinion is, I should think, I should, I think I should be Santa's Secret Service because I'm sneaky and quiet. I won't let Santa down. Reason one is, when I was a young elf, I could sneak up on everyone. Reason two is, I've always been able to help out. And reason three, there's 25 days till Christmas, and I've always wanted to help Santa.
My name is Claire Hudson, AKA Cookie Sugar Plum. The job I'm applying for is naughty or nice list. My hook is, "Dear Santa, if you want to have a Merry Christmas, pick me. I will check all the good and bad lists, such as nice, Jingley McJingley, and bad, Barry McMarried. My opinion is, back in my good childhood elf days, I would always be very good. I checked that list for my teacher, Jolly McMarried. Hire me for, hire me, Cookie Sugar Plum." Reason one, when I was a little good elf, I checked my mom and dad if they were good. Reason two, I'm always on the bell for checking anything. Reason three, you know when you, you know that you can count on me, Cookie Sugar Plum, please hire me.
Thank you so much for letting us share with you tonight.
Boys and girls, you are quite persuasive, and I wouldn't know who I would want to hire because you're all fabulous. And thank you for coming here and sharing your talents with our Board of Education and excellent writers, Ms. Balinski. And why don't we, one more time, give them a nice round of applause for being here today. Guys, I just want to pause one second before we leave because I know your parents probably want to take a nice photo of all five of you together. And we're all standing up there, so we'll just pause for a second. I'm proud of each and every one of you, and I hope you have a wonderful New Year. Thank you.
The Board of Education, I just wanted to mention one thing about Ms. Balinski here. Ms. Balinski is one of our teachers that has stepped up to the plate and is a member of the Content Advisory Council at the Ohio Department of Education. She's working very hard with other teachers across the state in the development of the state assessments. And the neat thing about Ms. Balinski's work is when she meets with the committee, she comes back and shares that information with Mrs. Johnson, with Ms. Farding, with myself, with Mrs. Slattery, and Mrs. Trappigan, and then presents information, what she can present to her peers at her building as well as the feeder school of Wilcox. So we're just delighted, Mary, that you've stepped up and you represent us so very well. So thank you for your efforts, too. We appreciate that. And I would like to ask Mr. Reese to come forward. He always has something exciting to say about RB Chamberlain Mills School.
I, too, would like to congratulate and thank the new board members for their service. I think your first motion should be that at these meetings, Chamberlain should go first and then Bissell because I'm tired of following that act. And you guys were so creative and so brave to come up here and speak in front of everybody, and you just did a fantastic job. So congratulations, and that was really a great lesson. We have Students of the Month for you today, and our teachers vote and nominate on the Students of the Month. The criteria include showing respect and consideration for others, showing enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities, having a positive influence on classmates, exhibiting leadership characteristics, exhibiting patriotism and democratic principles, and showing responsibility. And for our 7th graders, we have Logan Chapman.
Sahaj Barumba? Barumba. And if parents would like to take some pictures, we'll give you a couple minutes. And about another round of applause for our Students of the Month. You guys could take a seat. Go ahead, take a seat. Well, we're excited to have our students come back yesterday. Also, we started off, we had four basketball games yesterday on the first day back, and it was a clean sweep. 7th and 8th grade girls both won, and 7th and 8th grade boys both won. And that was very exciting. If you are a basketball fan, come and watch our 8th grade team. They're undefeated. They could win, they could win by 100, but that would not be sportsmanlike, so they call off some of the pressure after a while. But if you are a basketball fan, definitely come and watch. It's a very special group of student athletes. And they are student athletes. They perform in the classroom and on the court, and we're very excited to watch them as they grow as players. Later this month, right now, we're gearing up for a CVCC trip for our 8th graders. They're gonna go and visit our vocational school and see the different programs that they have to offer and see a different form of education and a career path they might take in the future. We started a new program this year. I like to think I have a lot of good ideas, but this one wasn't mine. It was a collaboration of our guidance counselors, the high school guidance counselors, and National Honor Society. And high school students, when their day ends, are coming to Chamberlain and are tutoring and mentoring our students, and we're pairing them up with two or three of our kids. And the results have been dramatic. Students who struggle behaviorally, motivationally, academically, are being teamed with senior peers, and they have had a great effect on these kids. And our teachers are excited about the program. We're excited about it. And it's just a win-win collaboration between us and the high schools. That's something new. We just started that early December, and the change has been dramatic. And so we want to continue to, we're continuing to expand on that, and we're continuing to add kids to that. We've also started with our Beach Brook counselors, and after about four weeks with having mental health services, I sit and think, "How did we ever survive without them?" The effect they've had on our families, our parents, the resource for our parents has been immediate, and it's been a great resource for us. I think one thing very exciting today, we do MAP testing, and that's one way we monitor our students' growth at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. And for our students who struggle, we also MAP test right around now, at the middle of the year, to see how they're doing. Recently, our reading coach went down and presented at OSBA about her program that we're very proud of. But we can think it's a good idea, but what does the data say? Well, she MAP tested her students right before break to see what kind of growth they've made, and she gave me the results today, and 80% of those students we identified as struggling readers had met their growth target or exceeded it for the whole year at midterm. So halfway through the year, she had already exceeded what MAP said they would grow by by the end of the year. And that is just a very powerful statement to the effect they're having. So that was my big exciting news today. I know a lot of people get excited about undefeated basketball team, but for me, it's MAP scores. So that was, that was just a very, we think it was a good idea. We presented to the state that we think it's a good idea, but we really have the data to back up that we are making a difference with those people in our buildings. So that's some of what we've been doing, and looking forward to a very exciting second semester with school plays and spring concerts and everything else that'll be coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Reese, you planted a seed here for me to mention that at our next board meeting, I've asked Mrs. Trappigan to work with our Beach Brook counselors to present to the Board of Education a little bit about Beach Brook, about how they partner with our school district, what kind of services we're providing to our students and to parents. And so that will be our administrative report for the January 20th Board of Education meeting, something to look forward to. And that concludes our comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. We're now at the section of committee reports. Do any of my colleagues have a committee? I don't think we do.
Mr. Felber, if I can just interject at this point in time, this is the point of the meeting that's-
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, yeah. Yeah, this is the time where if you've got homework, you're off the hook. No, you gotta go home and do it. Beds, bath time, all that. That's the quietest exit we've ever had from a group. So now we're at, any committee reports at all? I don't think so. All right, we're at the point of remonstrance. Do you have any blue cards at all? So we're gonna go right through that. We are at Section G, Treasurers' Report and Recommendations. Without objection from my colleagues, I'll read Items 1 and 2 concurrently. Meeting Minutes, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of December 16th and a special meeting of December 17th, 2015, is sent to the Board under separate cover. And G2, Tax Budget for the Fiscal Year 2016, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education reviewed and approved the attached tax budget for the Twinsburg City School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2016. Is there a motion for those two as read?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Solera, any, I'm sorry, second? Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Anything you wanted to add to any of those, Marty?
The tax budget is, we do that every year, and that's part of the budgetary process. The county uses those numbers then to kind of set the millage on our levies and stuff. It's kind of just a formality, but it kind of starts the process. And then from this, we have a resolution where they, to approve those rates. And then the next step is they send us a document. It's called the Certificate of Estimated Resources, and that's what we build our appropriations on. So all this is really just meant to make sure that political subdivisions, schools, cities, townships, anybody that receives public money stays within their budget. So this is the first step.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ture Walden?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
I'm staying.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
And that item passes four with one exemption, abstention. Make me say the big words today. We're going to move on to Action Items Personnel. H, and again, without objection from my colleagues, I'm gonna read the three together. H1, Employment Certificated, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. H2, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And H3, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three items?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any comments? Anything, Kath, on anything for that?
Just recognition of the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Patty Gracia.
Yes.
Mrs. Gracia has been Mr. Welker's secretary since his time, and she has worked here for 25 years, and we're gonna miss her. She has great influence at the board office, does a lot of things behind the scenes to support the organization. She will be with us through the end of the school year, however.
Excellent, thank you. And our congratulations to her on her retirement as well. Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Ture Walden?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna move on to Action Items New Business. We're in Section I. The first is our Academic Calendar, and I will note that we are at the end of what's a 30-day public hearing period. This calendar was introduced two board meetings ago, and that's Exhibit I1. So for the 2016-2017 academic year, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Academic 2016-2017 Academic Calendar. And, I'm sorry, I2, UOSBA Membership, Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the 2016 membership with the Ohio School Board Association at the cost of $7,854.00. Is there a motion for those two?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ture Walden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Davis, I heard. And I don't know if there was any comments on the calendar, Superintendent Powers, or...
Well, just to review for the parents and members of the community who have not seen this yet, for the importance dates on the calendar, students will begin school on Wednesday, August 17th, 2016. Winter break will begin on December 16th. Again, it will be a full two weeks of winter vacation with the three weekends attached to it. And our students will return on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. Spring break next school year is not attached directly with the Easter holiday because the Easter holiday falls so late in April. And so spring break will be the last week in March, much like it is this current school year. And the students' last day in May of 2017 will actually be before Memorial Day on Friday, May 26th, with the staff concluding the following week. So we are going to be finishing the 2016-17 school year before we hit the end of May. So this is a good calendar. Lots of folks looked at it, vetted it through our staff, provided opportunity for our parents and community to give us some feedback on it. And thank you very much for approving it. Over winter vacation, I received a number of emails from our families asking for this calendar to be published, so we can do that now that it's been approved tonight.
And we've been trying to do it earlier and earlier. I think this is the second earliest time that we've done it. So I know they got vacations to plan and such. Any other questions, comments from my colleagues on those two items? Roll call.
Mrs. Ture Walden?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
And those two items pass 5-0. We are at the Agreement of the Bidirectional Tenet at the Twinsburg High School. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with GPD Telecom of Akron in the amount of $32,000.00 for the purchase of a bidirectional tenet, which will be installed at the Twinsburg High School. This was sent to the Board under separate cover, and this is a permanent improvement fund expense. Is there a motion for this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. And I'm sure there's a little explanation here since-
Well, there's limited explanation we can provide because this is a safety issue.
Right.
This will provide some enhanced amplification to our radios at the high school. That's all I'm permitted to say at this point. The other important thing to note is that Chad was able to secure- Uh, the other important thing to note is that, um, Chad was able to secure grant funding, um, beginning of the school year, I suppose, and so that will help subsidize the $32,000.
That might be, the motion to have a middle name for Chad is grant funding. It's middle name. Thank you for your continued efforts on that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Turo Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. We are now at J on miscellaneous, and I'll ask my colleagues if they have any comment.
I just have something, um, real quick. This isn't necessarily a, a school-sponsored event, but, um, coming up in the next two weekends, the 15th, I think, through the 17th, and then the 22nd through the 24th, there will be, um, many, many Twinsburg students and their families performing at, through the, uh, Twinsburg Community Theater, and it's called, let me get this right, at the corner of Broadway in Twinsburg. So there will be thirty musical numbers and, um, like I said, several, uh, at least probably over a hundred of our students and their, um, plus parents will be performing. So if you have a chance to check it out, it'll be something really good to see.
And, um, are you okay? Um, I just wanted to, I was not at the last meeting, so I did want to express, um, my grat, gratitude to, um, Mr. Stuber for all of his leadership while, um, being on the Board. He taught a lot of us, um, a lot, and, um, had, has done some really amazing things for our school district. So I did wanna thank him. I also wanted to thank Kate Kane Criswell as well. She was a tremendous leader and, um, they will be missed, so thank you for your tremendous leadership. It was very much appreciated. And I also want to welcome, um, Mark Curtis and Matt Solera to the Board. I'm looking forward to working with both of you, um, as well as my colleagues, Rob and Tina. Um, I think we're gonna be a great team, and I think we're gonna accomplish a lot, so welcome aboard and look forward to some great stuff. Thank you.
Any comments from administration? In the, in the spirit of Tina's community message, I'll mention, um, the Sixteenth Annual Relay for Life has been planned, and there is a kickoff at the Masonic Lodge on January 15th. It's a chili cook-off kickoff. So, uh, for those that are doing, I, I know it does conclude, uh, you know, conflict with a couple other events going on around town, um, but that'll be the Sixteenth Annual Relay, uh, kicking off, so get your, get your recipes out and, or either just come taste, and, uh, that should be fun. And any other comments?
Uh, just, just a couple of things. Uh, I do wanna echo, uh, Kathy's comments relative to the contribution, uh, that Ron and Kate, uh, made to the Board of Education. Um, me personally, it's an honor and a privilege, uh, to be elected to serve, uh, and, um, I'm looking forward, uh, to working with my colleagues and, um, problem resolution, as well as, uh, doing some things to continue, uh, the great tradition that we have here academically. Uh, I've got kids that are proof positive of that, and I wanna continue along that, so I'm gonna make those remarks. Uh, also, wanted to jump on the bandwagon for, uh, RBC, uh, and, and the basketball teams. I'm in attendance at some of those games, uh, and I know it's not as big as the high school, uh, but it's just as exciting, and so if you have spare time or an opportunity, uh, to see some of the games, I strongly encourage you to do so. I think they play on Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, in the afternoons. A couple bucks a piece to get in, but the excitement, uh, is priceless. So, um, gonna keep rooting, rooting those guys on, uh, be successful, and I'm, I'm proud Papa, my son, who's on the seventh grade team, so I, I have a added, uh, added reason, uh, to be there, so I'm, I'm, I'm backing them up on this.
Excellent. So the, the Board does have need for executive session, um, and I will, uh, the Board will enter into executive session at 8:05 to discuss with the Board's legal counsel disputes involving the Board that are subject or pending or imminent court action per the Board of Education Policy 0166D, and to discuss the employment and compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A. I will make that motion and see if there's a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Turo Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
That item passes 5-0. There is no business planned after this, so, uh, we thank you for your attendance, and we are going to adjourn to executive session.